This conference will now be recorded.
Technical difficulties resolved. We will call to order this 5:00 PM meeting at 5:07 PM, June 22, 2022, joint meeting of the Select Board and Finance Committee. For the Select Board, Justin Mickook, present in Town Hall. And Susan Cooper is present in Town Hall. And for the Finance Committee.
Michelle Miller is present in Town Hall.
Frank Haber is two.
Okay, so we have.
We have two forums.
Two forums. So, the agenda is simple, review capital plan and review financial policies. I'm not sure if the Finance Committee had any discussion of what they were expecting from this meeting. But I think. What I think would be good is when, if you look at the 12 adopted financial policies in the document titled Financial Policies and Procedures Manual, I count 12 sections of which I think we've adopted 10. And the two that we haven't adopted yet are annual operating budget and capital improvements.
Who were those 12?
Michelle, tell me who was two.
Which 12? Was this in a Monterey document or part of the finance memo?
It was actually, actually Frank got it from Melissa, I believe. Frank sent it out.
There was 13, I had 13 segments of it.
Well, you only have to worry about the two today.
Yeah, and so the only two.
This is the draft annual operating budget that you gave me today, right?
I gave you two today.
Yeah, and you gave me another one too. But that was purchasing policies and procedures.
Right.
Oh, sorry, then it's 13 and we're working on three, actually.
I somehow don't have this document.
Don't worry about the approved ones right now. Only worry about the drafts that I sent you guys like a week or two ago. I sent you two that nobody sent me any edits to.
Nobody believed that they were two of them.
Do you know what the title of it was? Because if I search on you.
Financial much, financial policies maybe?
What I was thinking, we have, so it sounds like we have three, annual operating budget, capital improvements, and purchasing have yet to be adopted. But the other. The other nine or 10, especially I think financial reserve would be worth. What's that?
What you need from me? From your notes or from the document? And do you want to forward me the document?
Yeah, I needed to because I, I want finding anything that's relevant.
I don't see that.
I mean, I got something in an Excel sheet. And I, I have the MMA financial policy.
I think Frank sent it to every, I got it from Frank, I believe.
I don't have anything in my archives.
But, okay, but I don't wanna make things more confusing than they need to be. We've actually dealt with each of these policies individually. This is just a compilation of all of them. So since I've been on the board, for instance, we adopted the investment policy and the grant administration policy. And I think other ones such as financial reserve and fraud policy and property tax commitments and accounts receivable were adopted prior to me being on the Select Board. And they've all been dealt with as individual policies. This is just a document that combines all of them.
Okay.
My point being, I think, obviously we have three that we still have to adopt. And I, I also think it's worth revisiting financial reserve because I feel like if we get financial reserve fleshed out and something that the Finance Committee and the Select Board can agree to, it will make the budgeting process in the spring easier.
And financial reserve would cover free cash.
And stabilization.
And stabilization.
I just feel that we, we technically have adopted a policy. I just feel that last year during the budget process, we didn't really consult the policy to make the decisions that we made.
I'm just frustrated that I can't find the documents from Frank because it's frustrating to me.
It's, I have, do you want me to forward it to Frank?
Yes, that would be great.
Because.
I literally have nothing that was, that came from Frank. The only documents I have are ones that were sent to Frank.
What, and maybe what we could do is, this meeting doesn't have to be an hour.
So this is the first just in your budget.
If we're not ready, and I don't think we are, to actually be adopting policies tonight, why don't we come up, why don't we come up with a plan for how we are going to move forward? Whether it's dealing with, whether it's dealing with one policy a week for the next three weeks, or one policy every other week, or maybe we feel we can do multiple, multiple policies.
Or is the document he's talking about one of these?
No, just the, the two drafts are in there.
Yeah, so purchasing policies and procedures and draft annual operating budget policies and procedures are two out of the 12 or 13 that make up our complete.
What did they work on?
No, our complete financial policies and procedures.
Oh, see, okay.
But the two that we have yet to adopt.
Are the purchasing policies and procedures? And the, and the what?
Annual operating budget policies and procedures.
Which is that? No, okay, now I got it, alright.
And are these comments from the accountant or treasurer? From you?
Which one, the purchasing?
On purchasing policies and procedures, there are some track changes that I noticed.
Right, so these have both been reviewed by the accountant, which is who this who would be involved in this, so they are comments by her. Um.
Do you want, do you want me to send you this? All right. It is actually coming, it's coming from Frank.
No, I, I might have received something from somewhere. So my, my only question would be, Melissa, I see on this, at least the document I got from Frank, it says capital improvements.
I haven't worked on a draft, but I would.
Okay. But so that, but if you take these two and capital improvements, that would be the three that we have left to adopt. Okay, gotcha. So, I don't know if that, is that making?
All right, let's, now that I have sent this thing, and I finally have in front of me what Frank sent. Financial policies and procedures, council papers adopted years ago. You're fine with that one, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, as each member of the Finance Committee and Select Board reviews what we have adopted, if they feel there are changes to be made, I think I'd be open to reconsidering them. I think the one in particular that I think should be revisited is financial reserve. Fraud policy, investment policy, I at least don't have anything at the moment that, and all those, the other policies that I feel needs to be changed. But, and we also have to work on adopting these two drafts in front of us.
Yeah.
And ultimately.
I think I'm looking.
A capital improvement policy. And so maybe, maybe it would be a win tonight if we can just come up with a plan of attack. If we wanna probably start with the ones that we don't have adopted at all.
Right.
Being purchasing policies and procedures and annual operating budget policies and procedures. And it's my understanding the Select Board has been adopt, you know, I know because the two or three that I've been involved with during my year on the board were just adopted by the Select Board. But I think especially for annual operating budget policies and procedures, where the Finance Committee is intimately involved and depending on who you ask, the ultimate authority on that.
I don't have to go there because it's not.
We won't.
No, I think what's important is that we're.
But I think, what, my point being, I would like to work on these together as the Finance Committee and Select Board and come to an agreement, especially on a few of the key ones like annual operating budget and financial reserve.
I think those are very important, right, Lisa? Do you have this one?
Budget plan, I do have the fiscal year '22. That was signed off on by Cober, and Rollin, and Silver, and twice.
Right, right. So we did have this working, contrary to.
General perception.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and in fact, it worked quite well, I think, this year. And, um, not at it, I mean.
So I think the, the annual operating budget was, if I'm not mistaken, this policy would basically have the town administrator set the budget calendar each year, kind of the same way that was done in this memo.
Mm-hmm.
So whether we adopt a policy or not, we're gonna have a budgeting process this year. But I think if we can agree in the annual operating budget policy and procedure, that's superior.
There's nothing wrong with modifying a procedure, even if it's a procedure that works. Right?
Well, let's, but in. Can I just make a suggestion, like, okay, there's all these horizons, but, uh, let's boil it down to like, what is the date when we want to begin to put together the numbers? And so far, Melissa has, or our town administrator has taken the initiative to gather the information from various departments based on you, you request from them their budget projections that they wanna have included. Is that correct? Yes, okay. So is there any way that we wanna tweak that, change that? Do we wanna set a date for that? Is there a date that you think is the right date?
Well, I also made the changes in here, and my suggestions in here as well. So the draft policy includes similar to what we've been doing.
One, one thing I see right off the bat is, it says for timeline, you know, there's different steps, budget adoption, review, and there's a timeline for each, and it says no later than mid-February. And I think it's fine to, well, I don't know if it's late or not. That's a different question, but I think it might be worth setting a date. But, I mean, these are all small things. Why don't we take the time in between meetings? I think there's, it seems to me that we weren't all on the same page about exactly what we, by making a broad agenda, like review financial policies, we weren't all on the same page about exactly what we were doing.
I was reading the logs, so.
So why don't we agree, maybe at the very neck, at the next joint meeting, we'll just tackle one at a time. Does that make sense? Like, next meeting, we could do the annual operating budget policy and procedure, and maybe all come in with our edits, and then.
I think what I'm trying to get at, I'm sorry, if I wasn't clear, was instead of editing, let we, should we consider how we've done it? Was it successful? What changes would be made? And then, then.
Talk about concept rather than fine print, and then go from concept to fine print?
I think that's pretty much it, yeah, you know, like, I was fine with how it worked. Was I, you know, should I have been more structured or structured in a different way? Or is, is the way we get information from the departments the best way to get information from the departments? That will be impacted, I think, by the fact that the Finance Committee and, no doubt, the Select Board join together to visit the departments and really look at what's going on and have a more thorough understanding of where the requests are coming from and whether we support them. You know, instead of having company, somebody come in and sit down and tell us things in the abstract, I don't know, that's just the way, you know, I'm all like, I learned by looking at things, not by reading them, so.
Well, and, and, and one thing that can happen, Michelle, is this policy doesn't necessarily include the, the Select Board and Finance Committee going to the fire station and looking at the fire trucks, but it could.
Well, I.
And that might be a positive change.
But that's what, well, that's what we're planning to do on the Finance Committee is, is go on site, you know. And then maybe that informs our, maybe that's just part of the problem is that we go to, instead of having them come here, they'll get me down there. We see, I don't know what this truck is on, maybe you do, Susan.
You.
And certainly with Frank on board, who has a lot of experience with equipment and, uh, I think would be invaluable. So should that be part of our policy, is that every year we go to the departments instead of having them come here? I mean, some departments, obviously, it works better if they do come here, or live. Go to the library.
You go to the library?
Yeah, just walk across the street.
Oh, of course.
Anyway, that, that's my only point. This is to bring it, to ground it in an interaction that's different from having people come in and sit around the table. Be more inclusive. And we have the people that work for us see us.
Yeah, so what if, what if, um, here's my proposal. Instead of having a broad agenda of review financial policies, since now we have it kind of whittled down, we say, next meeting, we won't make track changes on the documents yet because we need to have a broader discussion before we all come in with entirely different edited documents. But what if, at our next joint meeting, we discuss the draft annual operating budget policy and procedure and discuss the purchasing policy and procedure documents, draft documents? And then at that point, we can decide whether we're pretty much on board with them or we, or if, you know, one board or one person feels like they wanna make significant changes, that could be another meeting. I just don't think that we are prepared right now to adopt them, nor do I think we're really prepared to have substantive discussion on what we want the budget process to look like compared to how it's, how it is in this document.
Well, for example, Melissa, do you think it says here, beginning late November through December?
Are we on operating budget policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should we start earlier?
No.
Okay, so that's a good, that's, that's something we should maybe agree on, that that's a good timeline.
Yes, and your department should probably say go a little bit later, but, um, you know, with the holidays and stuff, I say, I think saying beginning then is good. Doesn't mean we always will, but.
Right, because we did overlap, right? People couldn't make it right.
And some people don't have their numbers until beginning of January.
It's hard to get certain figures together.
Too early.
Too early, I mean, for something that's not gonna start till July. To get a contract number from a company that you work with in November is, would be impossible. Because they've only been, you know, five months already, they've existing one.
But it is helpful to meet that early to know what you guys have on the horizon, or what any department has on the horizon. You start talking to Sean and Jim, and you understand what kind of trucks they've got, what challenges they're facing with repairs and stuff. They may not have the numbers, but you know where you're going.
I think especially, we could ask for, along those same lines, we could ask for, if you are planning on making a significant change to your apartment, changing staffing, changing equipment, something like that, we wanna get those in as early as possible. If it's just a question of how much the software is gonna cost this year, we probably won't know till January, and that's fine, but if we could start in advance, you know, for instance, this year, I didn't feel like this year was rushed by any means, but like this year, let's say the police wanted to kind of restructure their apartment based on the bridge training and the police reform in Massachusetts. That's a good thing to know in December. Um, I think. But.
Things that you can know, it would be good to know sooner rather than later.
That, that makes good sense to know those, those, if you're making major changes, that makes very good sense to have that upfront.
Even if, even if the, the figures that might apply, the numbers of what it will cost may not be known, knowing that those changes are coming, that they have to be, we have to get the figures, is still important. Can't, you know.
So are, are we on board with that meeting? In a, in a week or a couple of weeks, we can figure out via email. But, and then honing in on these two draft policies, but not making track changes coming in for a discussion? At which point we can decide if track changes are necessary?
Um, one thing that I love to expand on in this is I felt like, um.
Are we on operating?
Yeah.
I can't see where it comes from.
Uh, I'm just.
Great.
Looking at how. I just wanna, well, I, I think I'll just keep reading and be ready for the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I felt like the success of the budget this year had a lot to do with the fact that the Finance Committee and the Select Board worked together. It wasn't one producing one and one approving or reviewing. It was like that every step of the way, we were able to move, move it along.
And well, then, I think we might have some changes to the policy because as I understand it, really, the Select Board and the town administrator are presenting a budget for the Finance Committee. But if we want, and that's just kind of how it is in the draft.
I know, and that's.
But if we wanna rework it to where it's a very collaborative process, I have, I have no, no problem. I have my views on the Finance Committee's role in the budget process. And.
But I think collaboration is rarely, I mean, it breaks down if there are people participating who are, um, making the process difficult. But if the people are participating in a positive way, it can be so much the better.
Well, when we had our.
Everybody knows what's going on.
When we had our preliminary budget, it was new and neat, you know, and we were both there participating as we went along and asking questions and, uh, and Melissa was collating everything and producing new, new versions of it as we needed. And I thought that worked out pretty well. Is that true, Melissa?
Yep.
Okay.
So, so our next, our next joint meeting is going to be, discuss draft annual operating budget policy and procedure, discuss purchasing, draft purchasing policy and procedure. And then we'll just start with those two.
I think that's.
And then if we wanna, and then at some point, we will go to capital improvement policy, which hasn't been drafted yet. And at some point, we may revisit at either Finance Committee member request or at a Select Board member request, existing policies. For instance, I wanna revisit financial reserve.
I agree.
Melissa, I imagine that these 12 policies were recommended or.
They were taken from another town.
Okay, so, and, I mean, these 12, I don't, I can't think of any gaps, but if someone thinks of another policy or sees somewhere else a policy that's missing, and we wanna adopt another policy, I think we'll just be open to that as a Finance Committee and Select Board. But why don't we just start with these two?
Mm-hmm.
Everyone will have time to thoroughly review them, they're only a couple of pages each.
Yep.
And at our next meeting, we'll just focus on those two. The other item on this agenda was review capital plan. I know at our last joint meeting, we discussed some general, you know, especially town hall maintenance that could be better represented in here, possibly. And I think also when we revisit our financial reserve policy and adopt a capital improvement policy, that will probably answer some of our questions about the capital, uh, plan.
I think plans are all very nice, but I think, uh, dollars. You know, policies are good. And, and, and if we follow them, what we have to always keep in mind, that we're talking about spending money. And just because it says we're gonna get such and such on such and such a date, you know, is that cast to stone or do we have flexibility? I mean, because we have a lot, you know, when you hear that we might have to come up to $750,000 for a covert, that's not even on here.
Or two or three million.
Well, I, that's forget it.
Yeah.
Let's get boats.
I mean, or let's make sure that we are applying for the grants.
So those are, that's happening, I think, right?
I mean, it's, I'm just saying, like, there's one of the, but the other thing is too, I think part of that comes, I absolutely agree. On the other hand, you know, just like when you have a house, you know that there are certain things that are going to need maintenance, and you have to, you may have to save in order to do it, but saying, well, just every year saying, I don't have enough money to fix the roof, I don't have money to fix the roof. And then the roof falls in on you because you didn't wanna spend the money to fix the roof, that doesn't work either. So, yeah, the plan, if you're really need the money.
That's right.
Yeah, exactly.
But I think that, um, it's, it's gonna be a process, and it'd be part of the process. Frank and I were talking about when we might get together with Jim, just for starters. So I'm going to go down to him and see when would be a good time for him.
Hey. And, and you can see on the capital plan, certainly the fire department and highway department are the most intensively represented. There's the library and the police department has a few cars and the transfer station payments, right? But for the most part, the vehicles for the highway and the, and the fire department. So those are two departments that'd be really good to meet with and have a discussion about the capital plan.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question? Melissa, you're not talking about you and Frank together.
Me and Melissa.
Meeting with, with Jim, are you?
Yeah, would that be wrong if I had.
There'd be a violation of the open meeting law.
Not if I posted as a meeting.
Oh, and the meeting will be there at the, um.
People will come and have a chat with you.
Well, I think there's also, there's certain rules, and I can't remember them, about you can meet somewhere and ghosts.
Can make a site.
A site.
That's it.
Uh, but there's certain.
Yeah, but not with a site, you can't just debate at the site.
Can't all lengthy discussion.
No, no, I mean, there's rules, and I'm sure Michelle will.
I'll make sure that it's right.
And you can post the meeting in any publicly accessible place. So the meeting could be posted at the fire station or.
We can go separately. But I can go first and I will go second.
Well, I think there's some value to.
I think there's more value to work together, really.
I know, I know.
I think as long as you, you don't make any decisions, you can, like you said, make a site visit together.
Cannot deliberate. Cannot deliberate.
Yeah.
So.
Elaborating or anything and.
But asking, I, I asked that, oh, no, about this. If you're, even if, if both of you were to be present and both of you were only to ask, Jim a question, like you ask a question and then Frank asks a question? If Frank's question is roughly on the same topic, that would be considered a question. And, but you get around it either by making it an open meeting
Right.
or only while you need it at a time.
Yeah.
Well, I just said one thing, frankly, I, I think it might be better to do it one at a time so that the conversations can be casual and information gathering rather than putting these department head in the position where she's making formal statements that are on the public record and the minutes.
That's a good point.
And there's probably some value to both types of meetings and nothing's, I know all the.
The thing is that when we have, I'm sorry to interrupt, but here we were, and there was you, there was me, and there was Melissa, and the department has statement, there's a public reading, and there was a record of the, whatever statements you made.
No, those were not, those were informal.
Oh, they weren't recorded?
Yeah, my, my documents are not.
Public records.
Well, they're not, are public records, but they're not for, you know, minutes or anything.
Yeah, like we didn't, we didn't post.
I didn't realize.
And remember, there was a little, um.
I'm hopeful about that.
About that. We didn't post those per session of this open meeting. It's my understanding that's never, they never have been posted.
No.
Right, and that, um, depending on how this policy comes out, it could be really the town administrator working with departments, in which case, of course, there are no meetings. Now, if it's the Select Board and the Finance Committee, I wouldn't really be opposed to a quorum of the Select Board being present at those meetings because I think they're very helpful, in which case we'll post them. Depends on how we decide to go, depends on how we decide to write this annual operating budget policy.
Well, it's just a consideration that we, I appreciate, I'm glad you brought that up. I think just going out there and talking to them without posting a meeting or something.
So we'll be careful on that. But as far as the next joint Finance Committee Select Board meeting, we will limit it to just these two draft policies.
Okay.
Come with our thoughts, no track changes. Uh, and then we will discuss at that point in time the broad ideas and, and decide if one person or a few people should go in and make the changes that we discussed.
Okay, and what, when is that gonna be?
Couple weeks maybe? How do you feel about a couple weeks?
I mean, it's almost over, too. How about, uh, well, do you think that it's worth doing a five o'clock, six o'clock meeting with you? So it could be like, we're doing it now?
Yeah, it's convenient for me. I have no problem with it.
Well, I'm gonna suggest the thirteenth, Wednesday, the thirteenth, right? That's three weeks.
It is three weeks, but.
It is?
We have, um.
Next, next one, she is the twenty-nine.
It is three.
Well, we can do it next week, unless it's too soon, or can we do it next week?
We can do it next week. I just throw out a couple weeks.
All right, so we're doing it next week. And Frank, are you back?
We've also got the Biolo.
You wanna do it the twenty-ninth?
I have six.
That's what they're, they're thinking, yeah, is what I have.
The twenty-ninth would be good. I'll be back in town that time.
Okay, then that's, that's it.
I'm only bringing it up. It's a six, thanks. I'm only bringing it up because I don't want us to get too backed up. So if we have the Finance Committee at five, and the Biolo committee at six.
Yeah.
It's fine, as long as we don't end up with too much other stuff on the agenda, but I prefer not to be hurt till nine thirty or ten.
Yeah. Well, one, one, yeah.
Thirteenth, you have Lucy, Josh, Darren, Jake, everyone coming in at six.
Somewhat the thirteenth again.
Who? Okay.
What was on the sixth?
Um, May, so what month? We're in June, so we're doing, are, do we wanna do, uh, geez.
What was on the sixth?
Yeah. July, June, July, sixth, well.
The sixth, they meet at noon, unless you're changing that.
That's for sure.
So do we wanna do June twenty-ninth at five P M?
I would like to do that.
Uh, that works for me. I'm back in town, too, so next one is.
That's good.
Okay, Wednesday, June twenty-ninth at five P M, with a simple agenda. Discuss annual operating budget policy draft, that whole thing. And discuss purchase, draft purchasing policies and procedures.
Okay.
Simple. We won't, we'll keep, we'll limit that. It gives everyone a week to thoroughly review these.
Do their homework.
And it will be a broad discussion, and we'll decide, uh, where we're headed and who should make edits. But I think we're all consensus builders, and we can get a sense of, uh, where we're headed. And have maybe one person make edits instead of all the edits. What's that? Does that wrap up the joint meeting?
I guess so, as far as I'm concerned. Frank, do you have anything else you want to talk about?
No, I think I, I, I take a note. I, I'm on board with everything that was said.
Okay, then, uh, at this point, uh, I'm going to make the motion that the Finance Committee portion of the joint meeting is adjourned.
I second the motion.
And we vote in favor of adjournment.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for joining us.
It's a pleasure.
See you next week?
Yes.
Can't tell.
Next week, I'll be there.
What do you say? We're gonna meet every week.
Oh, Lord.
Let's see how it goes.
No, I think it was.
No, I just, like, it gets to be a lot. We've been having two hour, two and a half hour meetings.
Oh, you guys are amazing.
And it starts an hour before that makes it.
Yes, no.
Like, long run.
But we are gonna get this done.
Yes, we are, and we're totally good.
All right, okay, we'll get on to your mirror.
Thank you.
Justin, can you just wait till six to do item one, because then there's.
We're gonna worry people to ask what time the rest are talking about.
Yeah. Depending how it goes, I don't know that.
I mean, if you just gonna approve it right away, then.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, we'll wait till.
But you can go to the others, though.
Did you by any chance get the policy that I sent late about the concerning employee response to Select Board communication requests?
No, but I've got it right now.
I did not.
Well, I didn't send it, I didn't send it to you. I sent it to Melissa, but it was on the, on the late side.
Oh, I'm, I'm gonna ask you the question. I didn't get a chance to talk to you on the floor about something completely. Did we, are we, did we adjourn our meeting?
No, we are, we, this is still a Select Board meeting. We, we don't have.
We're still. Okay, then I will wait.
Yes. Um, we don't have a break. We're going right into it.
Let's do it.
Because I, we can post it as five and six, but I figured let's post it at five, and then we don't have to.
That's fine, we don't, if we can go into our meeting, we can go in our.
Okay, so we're going to, uh, hold off on items one and two of old business, both concerning ARPA, until six o'clock. When the Fire Chief is going to be present. And we will jump right into number three of old business, which is policy concerning employee response to Select Board communication requests.
Is there a written document?
Yeah, where you wrote it, and.
Right, but you had, you're in line with it, do you have to?
I, I had to.
Okay.
No, it's not enough, that's. Dinner out, I'll take it. Do you want me to shut the windows? Huh? Oh, okay. Well, I, you know, I was just concerned about the air circulation.
Thank you. So, to keep everyone in the loop, this is old business number three, policy concerning employee response to Select Board communication and request.
You can leave the other one.
Susan drafted this last week. I took a look at it. My major changes, uh, Susan, was I noted that we can only take official act. We can only take official action as a board, but that we must research and learn on our own. And that this is really for appointed employees and officials, because we really appreciate working with elected officials, as we just did. But we can't do anything if they don't, they're elected. Um, I threw out there three business days, or the next day that employees regularly scheduled to work, whichever comes later. And to address urgent communications, I wrote, some responses may be more urgent and should be responded to as soon as possible. While other responses might warrant a longer response time. In which case, the employee or official should inform the Select Board member of the need for additional time.
I have no problem with any of your, I, any of your changes. I think they're, they're good. And, you know, I suspect that in large part, this will rarely be a problem. But I think it's important that, since there have been times when employees have simply chosen not to answer. That it's important for us to have meetings, like, well, that because I didn't know I had to, I'm gonna, yeah, I mean, you did.
Yeah, and I think, I think the most important part of this policy that, uh, is, you know, noting that we can only take official action as a board. But we're not really delegating the power to research and learn about town government functions. But acknowledging that, um, you know, board members need to some, uh, need to do that on their own in advance of the agenda items.
I mean, it's also true that if an employee is asking, sends us email asking us for something, and we're asking them for further information so we can make that decision. Isn't it really reasonable for them to expect us to make the decision without the information?
Yeah.
So that, I, it's not about taking an action, it's about needing further information before I can make the decision you want me to make. That seems fair.
Yeah. Should we get a clean copy to initial?
Sure.
All right, I'll motion to approve this policy concerning employee responses to communications from Select Board members as edited.
This one's like, oh, great, because it's got too many.
Yeah, the track changes.
I gotta clean one, right, yeah.
Yeah, we'll clean one. Uh, is there a second on the motion to approve?
Yes.
And any further discussion or public comment?
Yeah, I, I think that, um. You need to vote to, uh, send to only employees, so they know about it.
Yeah.
Since it's a new policy.
Yeah, and maybe put it on the, uh, I don't know, but you need to put it on the site, but, uh, the section should be sent to them.
So, one thing's gonna be for sure, it's gonna be appended to the minutes of this meeting. The other thing that's gonna happen is, we can post it to the staff portal or the general policies of the town. As we have approved a number of different policies and plans in the first couple months of this board. I have been wondering, how will, how will people find them, other than attached to the minutes? And I think it depends on exactly what policy is. This only relates to employees, only really employees and appointed officials need to know that this.
But that does mean, I think, they have the responsibility to actively ensure that they have it informed, not just have it posted somewhere.
Yeah.
Which would mean to me that every, everyone who would be covered by, uh, having to be present.
Appointed employees and officials.
Appointed, played, employees and officials, all of those people should at least email, um, on the open comments.
Yeah, so, and that's been happening, I believe, Melissa, right, when we've been approving things like this? Okay, so Melissa will take care of, turn it, everybody, and it will end up on the staff portal, does that work?
Sure.
All right, and any further comments or discussion? I'll call a vote, Susan.
Yes.
Justin, yes, and the policy is approved. We will still hold off on the ARPA, it not being six o'clock. Departmental, we'll just sign off on it, or we'll all sign.
Back from, and we're done. So, let's see, so, um, because I do, is this a one percent? Um, I think that, you know, one of the things that the town has been sort of trying to work towards has been to make sure that virtual job functions have coverage. In the event that that coverage is needed. Um, you know, this is something we all hope will be needed, but it also might be vacation coverage.
Yeah.
Right, like, I think the town administrator should legitimately be able to take a vacation without having to, um, you know, zoom into a meeting. Like, it's okay to have a vacation, and I think it's important. Um, and I think that recharge time is important. Um, but if it's an essential job function, we wanna make sure that you have coverage for those times.
Yes.
So, um, as Melissa pointed out in one of her emails today, um, the town administrative assistant is limited coverage, because it's thirteen hours. But we are a small town, we may not be able to afford complete coverage, but at least even thirteen hours is better than zero hours.
It's only nine, actually.
It's only nine, I thought, but it, what, uh, right, it's nine directly for you, but the other four hours are for the other two boards.
No, it's really not directly for me, so that nine hours will encompass two hours for the building inspector. And, um, two hours for other, for the other boards, leaving me with five.
Okay. Um, and I don't know how flexible, we meant that to be, um, it's not, it's not a perfect solution. But I think, um, one thing we could, even though that, I don't know how this works from a fact. So I'm raising, these are big questions that I don't necessarily have the answer to.
Yeah.
One thing to consider is that I don't know how this works from a budgetary standpoint. But, um, if you have a part-time employee like that, and there's a planned vacation for the person that they're the assistant to. Can you increase their hours temporarily to cover that? Now, they may not want those hours, so it may not be possible, but they, right, like, you can't guarantee it. But I don't even know if, from a, from the budgetary standpoint, that is something you can even plan it.
Well, I think we could budget it if we made that plan in advance. The only concern would be if someone's regularly working over the threshold that we have to provide health insurance. Um. I mean, I guess this is really, really kind of a discussion for, for budgeting, because for this fiscal year, or fiscal year twenty-three. We budgeted without that so much in mind, although definitely the office assistant, we thought, might be able to serve as some backup to the town administrator. But it's only nine hours, so that's like one day, uh, a week. Um.
And I, this is, like I said, my thought was that this is a longer-term discussion. I recognize that this isn't necessarily something we can put into place tomorrow, or even next week. But having a, a plan in concept to have that backup, I, I assumed it would take time, that we might not be able to activate it till, you know, whatever budgetary considerations got hold in the next year's budget. But you can't even do that if you don't.
It, it'll likely work, because I mean, we're not gonna hire someone on July first, so there's gonna be, you know, however many weeks of nine hours that.
Yes.
They're not using, so there, there's going to be some flexibility.
That's true.
Okay.
And does it, if you have a, an employee that's working nine hours a week, but in one work, work, week, works more. Because let's say, you know, you went on vacation for the holidays or something, and they were willing to do that. Does that, if they work more than twenty hours, does it automatically tip them?
No, it has to be a consistent twenty hours.
Okay.
So, if, yeah, if someone goes on vacation and they, one or two, that's fine.
So.
Um, but if every week now they're submitting twenty hours on.
That would make it.
That should be different story.
Um, speaking of policies, I would also like to put, have us put on the agenda of the view of, um, how time sheets are kept. And how they should be kept.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's important.
So, and it was my understanding the previous accountant or a prior accountant had a standardized time sheet?
No, we all have similar ones. Um, the treasurer and I have actually had a meeting with our payroll company to, um, discuss the time clock feature that they have. And her and I are hopefully gonna meet on Monday to discuss who we would recommend starting to implement this with first. Um, it's a really cool program, um, and it would actually, once, once we were able to do it with everybody, it would save a lot of paper and time with submitting time cards. And doing the payroll warrant, so I plan to come to you, hopefully next week, and give you an update on that and make recommendations, um, of who we'd like to start with.
Okay, and so, would it be different for each employee, whereas maybe the High, Highway Department or something, they swipe a card in?
Um, we'll have the option of doing a computer login or a phone login.
Phone login, okay.
Um, and it, it, the computer, it limits it to one I P address, so you wouldn't be able to log in from home.
Gotcha.
And the phone is within a radius of the building that we choose, so you can't just drive around and decide you're working.
Interesting, interesting.
Um, so, now I will continue with the, of course, previous.
So, you want on the next agenda, discuss the time sheet policy, or should we hold off?
Maybe we should hold off until we have a.
Until.
Yeah, I'll put my, mine as an update, and then it kinda opens it for you to be able to.
Okay. Right, exactly, right?
And none of the financial policies, did any of those discuss?
Payroll, and.
I don't know if the time sheets are specifically mentioned in payroll, which is a good question.
Pay, well, there's, no, there's a payroll policy adopted in September sixteen, twenty twenty. So that's worth a review, uh, if you want, in that document that you just received.
Right, I, I saw payroll, but time sheets may or may not be in there, but I'll, I'll have a look. I just made enough kids again.
Yeah. Gotcha, but we won't. Okay.
So, I, um, spill back to the coverage.
Yeah.
So, um, I did talk to Gary Shaw to, I had heard differing reports as to whether he was or was not willing to officially be an assistant clerk. And I wanted to talk to him directly to find out from a horse's mouth, what was the case there. Um, he said he is willing to be the assistant clerk. He, I, I have something I think now forward. Did I forward you his email, or did I not? I, like, I'm still unsure about how, or, I, could I forward that directly to you when he sent it to me, or did I have to wait till today?
So. So, you could send me documents for consideration at a meeting. But to any extent which it has any, you know, deliberation from you, I think it's just the safest bet to.
To wait till.
To, you know, say during a meeting, you know, I sent, I just sent.
So I will, I will forward both of you guys this document. Basically, it, um, lists what their qualifications are for assistant clerk and how he receives them. Um, the one thing he did say is that he's absolutely willing to take on the additional responsibilities, but not for minimum wage, which I cannot blame him. So, because, um, the going rate, as far as I could research, he sent me some, but I, of course, when he did the independent research, for an assistant clerk, sort of, um, the median, both in Massachusetts. for an assistant clerk, sort of, um, the median, both in Massachusetts and nationally, is about twenty-eight hour. You can, you don't have to pay that, but I, that was the research that I did. What, the part I don't know, and that would mean coverage for the clerk when she was sick or ill, et cetera. The part that I don't know, it's, um, having looked at the number of hours clerks have in other towns around here, we're sort of in the middle, there's a few towns, and I would list them for you, that literally two or four hours of clerk time.
Yeah.
There are obviously a number of towns that pretty much have, I would consider full time somewhere between twenty-eight and thirty-five. Obviously, we have the twenty-five, so the seven and a half hours, um, we're kind of in the middle at nineteen and three-quarter hours. I legitimately can say, I do not know how many hours of clerk time you actually need to do what has been done in a county in a day. So I feel like I, I don't know how to get a handle on that, but I would like us to at very least have someone that could cover for the clerk. She takes vacation, she's like, people are allowed to have vacation or be sick, and if we have someone who can cover that office at those times, we should do that.
Yeah.
Um, I talked to Don Lawson, who's the assessor, um, he is elected, but I just wanna make sure it's essential.
Well, I think he's appointed by the Board of Assessors.
Okay.
Yeah, who, who are elected.
And who, us who are elected.
Separately from us.
Um, nevertheless, if I was gonna do town hall, I was gonna do town hall.
Yeah.
Um, he has, um, worked on this for a long time, the firm that, um, already comes in and intimately helps him with particularly difficult things, and is familiar with the town, um, is willing to step in should anything, um, become an issue for him. Whether that was temporary or permanent would be another question. Uh, he has been trying to, according to him and several other supportive assessors, um, trained them in what he does. Um, from what I understand from them, they're not sure, they feel completely confident to take on that role should they need to, but the fact that he has a firm that knows our system and, um, is familiar with Monterey seems like a good thing.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, the, do we wanna delay this labor down there for people in here?
No, I mean, i- if you, do you feel that there's a, I mean, I think I understand what direction you're headed and I completely agree.
Right.
Um. If, if there are, I'm completely fine with you continuing to research it and talk to each department and figure out plans, and when they're ready for adoption, or ready for some official, I actually, the board, bring them back to the board, if that works for you.
It does, the one thing that, I mean, I think the one thing that we would be in a position to enact, um, but I think we would have to have a discussion about what we think is appropriate and how it would be financed, would be, how do we figure out what is the number of hours that are in a county in Monterey?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, how would we like to go ahead and, um, make Gary officially the assistant clerk? If so, how would we perceive of that and how many would be out immediately official hours or be the sort of switch hitter clerk that only gets those hours if he's covering for the clerk, like, I don't know how we would approach it, Melissa.
So, I'm just, I'm gonna give you a little history here, so he is the assistant town clerk, we just got rid of the title, and that was at uh, Terry's request, because she didn't wanna limit it to only being assistant town clerk, she wanted to have it so that they could do any duties that she assigned to them, so she changed it to town clerk staff or something. As Don will tell you when you made me town administrator, title means nothing, you could call me Fred, you can call him Fred. Um, the way that it should be working, because she is an hourly employee that does not get benefits, if she's sick or takes vacation, he should be paid from her account under the town clerk staff, whatever rate you decide, so you don't need to make any title changes or, and he, and, and that position as the town clerk does not require any special, um.
Certification.
Certification, they are out there if you want to go to them, but it does, it's not required.
Could we also rely on the human resource director, I think, in part of this discussion? Because these standards of, of how, who should be paid out of what account when someone's on vacation, I mean, I think are all good things to learn, but if we wanna fee a board that's focused on setting goals for the town and, you know, the things we need to be focused on, we have to, well, now we have a human resource director to rely on for those types of questions.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
But I, I think the goals of departmental backup and redundancy are very good goals.
The goal is to make sure we have coverage, right? Right, and, um, you know, I, I think it's reasonable, I, I got a different message when I, I did not talk to Terry, I only talked to Gary, but the message I got from Gary was that he was staff, not assistant clerk, and that as staff, he wasn't willing to, um, serve as assistant town clerk in her absence unless he was assistant town clerk. Which I, basically, it takes, it's a, it's more role and responsibility, when he's staff under her and she's here and he's just doing what she asked him to do, it's a different role than being accessing the computer, the state computer, and serving the role of the town clerk. And I can see why, I, I might be unwilling to take on additional responsibility without additional recognition. And I have to respect that. But we can definitely see, like, we can't really ask him to do that until we know how good he am, so if we wanna wait and not make a change until we have the HR person on, okay, that's right.
Yeah, I just think that's the safest way, we just spent, and I spent so much time in my time on the board, uh, trying to figure out the nitty-gritty of human resources, and I'm thrilled.
To have somebody that.
And so grateful, that, maybe that will become less of the role of the Slack board, um, and we can focus on general policy and long-term goals, um, and then kinda leave the nitty-gritty HR to the director.
That was.
Uh, not that we shouldn't still guide them, and we have that next, on the agenda, just draft out the new human resource director, laying out our goals. Uh, but I don't know the ins and outs of the National Labor Relations Act or the, you know, those important uh, laws. Um, I do see Sean is here, Sean's our fire chief, and we have on old business number one, consider approval of urgent requests for American Rescue Plan Act funds, and we are considering approving fifty-five thousand dollars requested by the fire department towards purchasing a new Rescue Five, uh, in particular, the used twenty-eighteen Expedition from Southern British ambulance, which they put into service in twenty-nineteen. And I think it has on, in the neighborhood of ten thousand or fifteen thousand miles on it, so it's lightly used and fairly new. At a, at a good price and ready to be put into service. Um, very soon with medical, equipped with medical cabinets and lights, and I think we probably need a new paint job for Monterey, but other than that.
New stickers, a vinyl job, yes.
Other than that, it's pretty ready to go. So we considered this last week, we had some discussions, we have since learned, uh, some things, which is that Rescue Five is owned by the fire department, if we purchase it, unless people don't, unless there's a change in art, but it would be owned by the town and the fire department, this new expedition. Um, we talked to the police department about repurposing twelve-seventy, and they said that twelve-seventy already has a plan to be used for defensive driver training and to be used as a backup cruiser, and that it is an Explorer which has less room in it. Consumer Reports actually has the cubic feet of, in, inside of the vehicle, and it, and it is considerably smaller, um, especially when you take out the back couple of rails. And this vehicle also has medical cabinets equipped. Uh, so I don't know where, yeah, Susan, but after all the consideration that we've done, it seems to me to be a, a good, good purchase with good medical, good setup for medical, and even like Sean mentioned, the license or permission to transport people, if need be, not that we would regularly be transporting, but maybe, maybe out of, um, a tricky spot that, uh, the ambulance can't get to.
Um, I, so, if you, if you're asking, I, I think it's a good purchase. Um, I think that, you know, from an economic standpoint, putting another eight to ten into a vehicle that's not in great shape in favor of a vehicle that came away that meets a need that we have, um, is a good choice.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm, I'm in favor of it, for all the reasons you said.
Yeah, and so, I guess the one, the one thing that I would like to clarify, um, as far as the capital plan goes, is I think that this should be added to the capital plan. Um, to the extent that if it's part of our fleet and it's a vehicle that, um, is going to be part of our fleet, then when it, we should plan on replacing it when it gets worn out. And if, and if the local fire departments of us and the neighboring towns are restructured at some point, and it doesn't need to be replaced, then that's that, but I think we should plan on replacing it.
Or stating what direction we wanna go instead.
Yeah.
Like, it makes sense if it's in the fleet to have a plan, but, and that plan may change, like, whatever plan we make, if things are evolving, it may be that that plan will evolve too, which, that's what happens when changes get made.
That's right. Yeah, and so, and you never know, we might have a fifteen-year roof or thirty-year roof and it starts leaking earlier than you thought, but I, I think it's good to add it to the plan. Um, I would motion that we approve fifty-five thousand dollars of the American Rescue Plan Act funds towards purchasing the used twenty-eighteen Ford Expedition from Southern British Ambulance, for the fire department. Is there any further discussion or public comment?
I'm very pleased.
Thank you, beloved.
I'm very pleased.
There being none, we'll call a vote, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, and the motion carries, and. So, that's that.
Thank you.
We should probably let the insurance, I mean, all that stuff, figure itself out.
For ground. Yeah, I think, yeah, I work with Melissa, we get it registered, we get it insured.
Okay.
I'm assuming they'll wanna check first before they'll. They're always entitled to us, so.
Typically, you work, they'll have to get me an invoice for it, something.
Yes.
A personal signature or something.
How's the April money, what is this, that due tomorrow too?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Looks like my, Michael gave me a handfuls.
I feel your pain.
Yes.
I can pick up something on my way through if you need me to, not tomorrow, only in the morning.
Okay, I'll give Sean a call right now. Um, yeah, I'll figure it out, droughts are a couple of weeks out, so.
Okay. Well, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
But here's to not needing it to pull someone out of a bad spot.
I'm me.
I'm the queen of, I'd rather have it and not need it than need it and not have it, so.
Yes, works for me, but that's usually not how it works.
I know.
That's our job, so, thank you.
All right, good night.
Night.
And we will add that also to the, moving on to number two, plan for deadlines and disbursements of capital funds.
Um, before we get there, I just wanna go back to the last thing I had, I mean, what we were talking about.
Okay, so we will return to new business number one, departmental backup and redundancy.
Yes, how does one, um, we, because our hours for the clerk, why, like, smack in the middle of what most, like, everybody else is either, like, below ten hours or full time? We're like, definitely the exception. I legitimately don't know how one ascertains what, where Monterey falls in that.
Well, and one thing that you should probably be aware of is that I think some of those towns where you're seeing only a few hours posted, I think it's an elected clerk.
Okay.
I could be wrong.
But the town still has to pay them.
I would, well, I would look into that, but if you're elected, you set your own hours, like, you really set your own hours, right?
But if you're setting your hours, those are the only, if you're elected, aren't you still getting paid only for the hours you work, or you have a salary?
You're, you have a salary usually, is my understanding.
I get a stipend usually, okay.
And I would imagine if someone posts four hours, uh, then they're probably not just working four hours, they have four office hours, and they're probably spending other hours doing some of the functions of the job.
Right.
But I mean, I, I, I don't know what to say, I think that the scientific or mathematical way of trying to compare us to other towns certainly has its benefits, I think at some point, they run out to the extent that every town is different. And even, I know Melissa had prepared a similar spreadsheet last year, and even if you wanna look at pay, it can get wildly different because some, some clerks in the area, some town clerks, part of their pay is fees that are collected, and we don't always know what, how much those fees amount, now you probably do that research and really find out. Um, anytime that there's an elected town clerk and they set their own hours, you have no clue what, how many hours, or how many actual hours they're working. They might not, because they might say, I'm elected, and I have my office hours that I'm willing to keep because I want to, and because, maybe because they wanna get reelected, maybe they don't, but, uh, maybe just 'cause they are trying, you know, they're doing a good job for the town. But you're never gonna really know how many hours, uh, so all you can do.
And it appears that the state doesn't actually, if they're elected, there's really no oversight at all from what I can believe. Um, unless they break a law and get caught for it.
Yeah.
The state does not monitor their.
Well, there is no oversight, and there is a lot of oversight, because a lot of things that they're doing, whether it's elections or this or that, are governed by state law, right?
Right, but the thing is, um, something can be governed by a state law, but if the state never checks to see if those things are done, then.
Well, yeah, but I mean, let, let's say the, you know, the Slack board posted a special town meeting and the, and the town clerk didn't, uh, have a, have minutes for the meeting, or they have two certified town meeting minutes, and they didn't, you know, fulfill those essential functions of the role, I mean, if you're elected, you're probably not, not ever get elected at the end, and you may get recalled, and if it's, if you do something really illegal, then the, it turn, then the state's going to.
Yeah, it'll only be true if it was, right. Sanctioned.
Yeah.
Um.
Um, but. Where did that leave us?
Well, I guess what I was.
Oh, so, yeah, I think there's some value in comparing us to other towns, it depends on the department, I think at some point,
I see a point.
You know, you can look at other towns and say, well, they have so many miles of dirt road and paved road, and this how many miles of dirt road and paved road, and how much we spend on maintaining them, or the library is, has two thousand books, and their library has four thousand books, but at a certain point, every town has some character.
I totally agree with you, everything you said, what I, what I'm trying to get at though is, if we wanna evaluate is nineteen, I mean, you know, nineteen and three-quarter hours plus staff, add up.
Yeah, and so, I.
How do we do that?
I think, so we.
Cause she is ele- appointed, not elected.
Yeah.
It is us, up to us to control her salary and her number of hours, but to do that, we have to have a sense of what the job involves, right?
Yeah, and, and so that happens, I mean, it's gonna happen during budget season, really, i- i- if you ever wanna increase hours, it's not gonna be so urgent that you're gonna call a special town meeting, so, and if you wanna decrease hours, I mean, the town meeting approved a certain budget. So, I think probably those questions are generally appropriate for budgeting time, because the budget for fiscal year twenty-three has been set.
Right, and I understand that, but I'm just saying, if we're trying to do backup and we're trying to figure out how that's gonna work, we have to know how many hours that person serves, it's been this way for a while, but it's also been that if it was just that person and it was just that person with an assistant, and I'm just saying, like, in order to be having that budgetary discussion, because the budget is how much we're going to pay, but we also need to have a sense of, if you're asking someone to do a job, if the job actually takes for thirty hours and you're saying, well, we're only paying you for nineteen, that's different than if the job actually takes ten hours and we're paying you for nineteen, like, I, I'm just saying, you have to, in order to be responsible about how you go through that process, you have to have an idea of what the job involves, so you can be setting reasonable expectations so that the person can reasonably fulfill their job.
Yeah.
Right, that's a, that's an employer responsibility.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't legitimately, I, I see, Melissa, I don't legitimately know how one goes about establishing what the job involves, the HR person might, and so this. Establishing what the job involves, the HR person might, and so this might be something that we've put on that. Even if it's not immediate, but.
I think the best way to do that is to have her submit a weekly report with what she's doing, how much time she's spending on it, like. First certificate, how many did you do this week, how long did it take, your death certificate says, we know the functions of a town clerk. And and I think that's the easiest way, you know, we all of us say the police do a weekly report, I used to do a weekly report, I I, you know, we tried to. We actually talked about this, I'm with you, we're on the board, the other half. Um and asked Terry and Don Torrico to start doing it and unfortunately, the requests were. Not, it wasn't followed up, yes.
So and and I will and I will say, as I've said before tonight, but. I do hope that a human re- a job description and hours work for job. I hope that the human resources director, not necessarily take care of this, but aid us in the process.
And you may have other resources for putting it out.
They're they're a professional.
Right.
And uh and like I, like I said, I think the less time that this board spends on any human resources. Hours and job description, which we do need to set general policy and goals for things like make clear job descriptions. And evaluate hours and we need to work with the HR director on those things, but the more that we can utilize their professional abilities. Probably the more we can get done.
So I I like that, let's put that on the.
On the list, yeah. Okay, so that we're done with new business number one and we'll move. Back, finish the last item of old business number two, which is plan for deadlines and dispersments of American Resting Plan Act funds. So we started with two hundred and seventy. Thousand roughly, a little bit more.
Two seventy six, one ninety.
Two seventy six, we have put seventeen and change to the ambulance service and now we put fifty five even. Towards purchasing a vehicle from the ambulance service for the fire department. So we have a new total that we're working with, which is probably just north of two hundred thousand dollars. And we have to decide how we are allocating those funds. I'm I'm pleased that we have. Already with our first expenses acknowledged and supported the ambulance service and the fire department. Because they were some of the. People that responded to COVID emergencies, emergencies during COVID. Uh and will continue to respond to emergencies. So I think that's good and we obviously, as we discussed many times, have four or so remaining requests for funds. But we talked about doing an application form and setting a deadline and I. Held off on this a little bit because I wanted to see the outcome of the. Of this request for the fifty five thousand dollars, because that certainly puts us in a different landscape now. Because I think we still only have half the funds available.
Yeah, and your balance will be two oh three, two eleven.
Okay.
And when does the, when do the additional funds?
We're supposed to, it was supposed to be one year after we got the others, I believe that we should be getting it anytime now.
Okay, and so it's it's, I mean, by by the time you finish any real application process, you know, they'll be available and we can allocate them. Even if we don't have them yet, we can plan plan on how we're going to spend them. Um, but I don't think any longer it makes a lot of sense to say, we'll allocate the first half, at least not if you're saying the first half of. Two hundred and seventy, because two seventy, one thirty five, now you're talking seventy thousand. If we wanted to say the first half of the remaining two hundred and three thousand.
I'm okay with just doing.
Doing the whole thing, yeah.
Um, I threw the half out there just to sort of get the ball rolling, maybe it's not a commitment to that.
Yeah, so why don't, and we were talking about setting a deadline in November.
Was it November? And again, I threw that out there, if you want to make a suggestion for a change.
I think November is reasonable, it's before budgeting.
Right.
Right at beginning of budgeting. And it is after we have a third board member and it gives plenty of time for.
People get.
People to work with us and put applications in and also work with us if they want to.
So I did go ahead and um edit the.
Application form.
Application form that Michelle had sent me, um, I. Sort of laid it out, but I wanted to get feedback from you guys on whether you had anything you thought should be added before I spent a lot of time trying to. Make the sizes, the boxes.
Yeah.
Comfortable for people, um.
Can I get that?
Yep.
Um, this evening, I guess.
Yep.
And then I will work on that this week and be back. Uh for next week, so we'll have American Resting Plan Act funds. Formal application form and tentative will do in November of twenty twenty two. And after that point, we will allocate the remaining two hundred and three thousand dollars. Of American Resting Plan Act funds. Okay, thank you, so I will review that for next week. And we will put it back on old business, uh so that takes care of all of our old business this evening. Uh new business, number two, draft letter to the new human resource director laying out Monterey's initial rules. I believe we were each going to take a stab at this, highlighting any.
There it is.
Yes.
Um, so rather than drafting a letter, I tried to come up with things that I thought should be on the priority list.
Yeah. Um, do you want to just discuss and then? One of us could could draft draft the letter, I mean, we have until until July fifth, but I think that's.
This in this area, we work on pulling it together.
Yeah.
I I think for better.
Uh.
And the letter could be one thing and it could be followed by a list of things we think are priorities, um. I mean, you could either way, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You could say, we're we're happy to have you on and whatever and then attached is our. You know, our preliminary priority list or work that the county's.
I like that idea, um, because. I think a bullet point, something like. Uh uniform timesheets that you can log into on your phone or computer. And things like back backup when a department head is gone and can their, right? Those are things that we could bullet point and we probably don't need to write in paragraph form. Because this person, you know, will be a human resource professional. So, I mean, we want.
Do you want me to read you up on my priorities?
Yeah, sure.
So, um, fully state and federally compliant, one sexual harassment and two harassment policies. Including clear guidelines for how a complaint should be, I can send you this so you don't have to pick it up, Alyssa. How a complaint should be filed, with whom, what information should be included, who's responsible for investigating the complaint. The timeline for said investigation and clear guidelines for outcomes of said investigation. That was one.
Yeah.
I just think we need both of those, like, soonest.
Yes.
Um, suggestions for amelioration of the current personality conflicts in town hall with a particular focus on reducing employee stress. As well as minimizing potential liability for the town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so then I have revision slash update of employee manual and I have a bunch of bullets under that.
Yeah.
To which I will now add some of the things we talked today, but process for annual reviews of all town employees. Annual priority list for salary staff or those with significant responsibilities, oops. Uh, no, actually, so I spoke with some folks that have been in the business world. And one of the things they typically do each year um is that all. Um senior staff members, whatever you want to call that, come up with a priority list, their priority list for that year. And she stipulated it has to be small enough you could carry it around with you, so like on an index card, so we're not talking about like that. Yeah, we're talking about a ten page document, we're talking about something that helps you stay oriented on when you're done putting out fires. These are the things you should be working on and it should be, you know, two enough things you can actually accomplish those goals.
Yeah, I was going to make you care.
Right.
And I think I don't want, I don't want to be, uh, I don't want to confuse you and say that. You know, I don't think the select board should deal with human resources, I think we should deal with it kind of exactly from the the point of view. Of this letter that we're drafting, the human resources director, well, here are our priorities for the town and then. You know, delegate responsibility and also work with professionals to accomplish those goals. But sometimes the the technical stuff can get really tricky with all the state federal laws.
Absolutely, and I'm not trying to micromanage, that said, people coming from, as my friend pointed out, people coming from a government background. Um, may not always be um up to date with what's happening in like corporate HR policies and that may be appropriate.
Yeah.
But sometimes there might be things that are happening that are worth adopting, even if it hasn't yet washed over into all. But anyway, that I think it's important for employees also to have their, to know what their priorities are and to be able to share those. With the HR person at all. Annual employee satisfaction survey is sort of the review and perverse of an annual review, the employees' opportunity. To say what their satisfaction level is or what issues they had that were or weren't resolved by the town.
Yeah.
Um, which I think is an important part product of that process. Carry out annual reviews for all town employees prior to budget season, tool out for bases being included, budget. Suggesting options regarding annual pay increases slash debt structure slash raises and salary caps.
Yeah, and review, I guess the only thing I had. We're talking about raises and pay, does that include, um, I know we had talked about just evaluating where employees are at to see if we're competitive.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I think just along in in lines of salary, because I know that that was recommended to us actually by the transportation committee. Um, and I know we did the highway department, we adjusted some of the highway department. Rates of pay last year, but it'd be nice if they have the ability to and the time. To review as the all employees, to make sure that that our rates are competitive. And that they're working with employees in the town.
Yeah, wouldn't it? Revision slash update of all job descriptions, um, uniform process for timesheets, um.
One thing I can think of adding, if you if you don't already have it in there is, um, I know we discussed leadership training. And I don't know that the human resources director necessarily would provide that training, but. I think that is a pro- uh human resources priority. For the.
Um, you mean for the town as whole or for the, like, for the HR person or for the HR person to get that?
Well, we had, well, we had talked about. Oh, not for the HR person to take leadership training, but maybe they can help us. Uh, find leadership training because they'll know.
For this select.
For the select board and we had also discussed other. Um, potentially other department heads, but then we also found out to some degree, other department heads had received. Leadership training, but maybe the human resources director could help us evaluate the need for. Leadership training, you know, for any or any kind of training.
I was just going to say this, other training too that you could. Maybe want to have.
I would say, yeah, why don't we like evaluate the need.
Valuing availability for uh leadership, leadership or executive coaching.
Yeah.
For, um, what do we call it, salary staff, senior staff, I don't know.
I would say department heads.
Okay, that's good.
Or and select, select board members.
I put that as a separate item.
In general, it would just be nice uh to with the help of this human resource director. Uh, you know, create more of that back and forth, whether it's performance evaluations and like you said, an inverse. Size of satisfaction uh ratings and more more, a better conduit.
And, you know, from my perspective, if they have a, if they understand what we're asking for and they're like, you know, I think you should do it this way, I'll be like, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Right, but you have to raise the issue and if they have a better solution. That's.
Yeah.
What else did I have to add?
That, that, uh, as far as I know, it it is the last, but one thing we could do is, well, we're working on a, just kind of a welcome letter. And I'd be happy to draft that.
Okay.
If that helps, a welcome letter to the HR director. Um, and. If you send me that bullet list while we're still in the meeting.
Of course.
Um, then we can, you know, attach that and I can write in the letter. These are some of the priorities that the select board thinks are important for the town. And I thi- I I like that that idea of of following up with a bullet list. And we can, you know, finalize that or have further discussion on that next week. I'll put up, put on the agenda for next week.
While we're talking about HR, I did reach out to Mark about the change that you wanted to see in the IMA and um.
What's the IMA?
The intermunicipal agreement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and he said that. He answered that Monterey does not have a town manager form of government, which would require a special act of the legislature, so apparently he's not going to make the change. Also because Sheffield and West Hockers are already signed it.
Yeah.
Um, so are you okay with amending your?
So who has a town manager out of those, out of the five?
Just Great Barrington.
Just Great Barrington? Yeah, I mean, it it would, they would be the only ones who would be confused at all by the wording. It wouldn't be a problem for any of the other towns, I think it's odd, I mean, I understand it's pretty standard. In Great Barrington that they're used to the town manager regularly exercising that kind of authority. If I were Great Barrington, I still would have wanted more clarification, but it's not really a problem for us.
Okay, so you can amend that, you'll you'll sign it tonight then?
Yeah, I I would motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement. Uh, without any changes for clarification uh on the basis of. It's clear for us.
I agree, second.
Any further discussion or public comment? Call a vote, Susan.
Yes.
Justin, yes. Okay, so yeah, you'll send me the bullet point list and I will draft a letter and I will work on that. Agenda, back to the agenda. Sign and mail warrant for special election. So we have this here warrant for special election, seven copies of it. One for the town hall, transfer station, post office, general store, main road, that are near the intersection of Swan Road. Select board file, and what's the seventh one on, I guess.
I'll just keep an extra one here.
Okay, so I would motion to approve this warrant for special election for Tuesday, I was twenty third, twelve to. Seven PM, one under the select board to me, tonight, twenty twenty third.
Second.
Any further discussion or public comment?
Wait to see if it ends up.
All right, Susan.
Yes.
Justin, yes, motion carries, warrant is approved, we'll sign all seven copies and we'll mail, we're mailing it out to everybody.
Uh, did you guys decide to mail it out thoroughly?
Yeah, I think we should.
I think we should.
Okay, uh.
Especially since people really don't know about it.
Exactly, and I I think just posting it isn't enough for for something like an election for a select board member like that, there should be people that is.
And 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 it's unusual too, so.
Yeah, exactly.
There's no objection, so we will mail it out and we can pay for that out of town meeting warrants fund.
Uh, let's see if there's any, if there is some left, I'll use that if not.
Oh, from last, yeah, if you get it done in this fiscal year or otherwise, select board expenses. If we have money. Uh, but I think it's, I really do think it's worked on it.
I totally do, I mean, it it's an unusual thing that I don't, it hasn't happened before.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't think we're back.
And you know. I saw New Maux Rose. New Maux. Select board member, uh, so now that's Sanusfield, Monterey and New Maux over there.
Who resigned, who resigned over there?
Uh, the brand new member, two or three weeks on the job, Dan Holden. He was actually a write-in, he was a last minute write-in who won and a write-in just won in um Sanusfield too.
John Field, same.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so and then he resigned in a couple of weeks.
Katrina wasn't there tonight either.
She has a new job and I don't think the schedule.
Lots of work to her.
They're right, they're gonna be looking at a new scheduling for their meetings.
You've already got an election, you have to do it.
Well, so in Select Board, as far as I know, I'm trying to think if there's one other position. Uh, as far as I know, any resignation or any other elected body, we can make an appointment until the next election. So last year, we appointed someone to the planning board through the next election. We appointed three people to the library board of trustees until the next election. But Select Board is different.
Yeah, because you can't appoint yourself, so for a friend to sit down here with you.
Right.
As your favorite dog.
All right, that is the sign and mail warrant for special election. Fiscal year twenty-three appointments and reappointments.
Okay. So I didn't know, I didn't give you a list there because your list did not merge well with mine and, um, and you were missing quite a bit of stuff on yours versus mine, so I don't.
Who, what was I missing?
You were missing the police and police theories, um.
I, I didn't knowing we take off police, so if I did, that was a mistake.
Like I said, they didn't merge well, so I don't know if you wanna just put this up one more week, it doesn't have to, it don't have to be.
Can we print, can we print mine and print yours and that way, at least if we can't decide tonight?
Yeah, or. But at least we can.
Now, we look at, I'm not opposed to putting it off a week. Um, and I can see what I missed in my list.
I did send you my list again, that could you make the changes in this one?
Oh.
Um.
I'm sorry, I.
That's all right.
I didn't, uh, didn't get my email this afternoon, more or less. I did a couple of emails at lunch, emails.
Um, I'm getting to this. So what's next?
Um.
Where, where we're going to go.
I am, I am interested, well, because we can have a quick discussion. There was a couple, um, committees, well, groups, um, that I would be at a meeting and I would say, or send an email. The Renewable Energy Working Group. Do you all still want to be, uh, reappointed? Because I don't wanna appoint people who have no interest in being reappointed. Now, I didn't always hear a hundred percent positive affirmations, but I also didn't hear anyone say, no, I don't wanna be reappointed.
Okay, so in other words, not everybody replied, but of those who did.
Well, usually I would, you know, just email the chair.
Okay.
Um, for, okay, and for instance, the Historic District Study Committee. The general consensus among that group is that they would rather be a, a historical commission.
And we do, don't we have a historical commission on the board books, but we don't actually have one?
We have none appointed.
Exactly.
But now we have, at least six of the seven members are willing to be appointed to a historical commission. It's my understanding you can have three to seven members.
Is there a reason we haven't, why, why were they disassembling instead of the historical? Why were they ever put?
I don't know the full history, other than I think the Select Board at the time wanted a more narrow focus for the.
Okay.
Um, of just designating the center of town as a historic district, whether national register or local, with local bylaws, with Monterey bylaws.
From what I understand from Barbara, they can't actually go forward with it even if they want to do it unless they are absolutely commissioned.
Yeah, that seems to be one of, one of the.
Limitations?
Understandings. Uh, another thing that I should point out is that the Regional Transportation Advisory Committee, uh, they had, the Monterey representative resigning that.
So which one's, which one's which?
Justin's is the last one.
Okay, I got it.
Mine has this, uh, the smaller rows. Um, but I have no problem with, with waiting till next week and make, and checking with people that they are willing to, to serve.
Ask for a line.
And, you know, there's also another thing that we could and should do with groups like the Lake Garfield Working Group, the Renewable Energy Working Group, the Transfer Station Committee, uh, you know, all those kind of advisory committees to the Select Board is write letters or have joint meetings or somehow touch base with them on where they are at, given the new composition of the board and, uh.
Another the Transfer Station Committee meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, okay.
What do you do?
Paul, I thought so.
No, I think, that's fine.
Not that I know of.
I don't think it's on both of us tomorrow. It's on my calendar for the twenty-third.
Oh, you know what? Somehow I missed, because the, okay, so police chief is six months.
They don't have an agenda, so.
Yeah, because he's on, he retires and.
Yeah, oh, so I don't know.
Okay, I will email the board members.
Do, I don't have it on there at all, I don't.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that was in the minutes that we were starting a meeting for that. But I will email the board members tomorrow to say that apparently we didn't get it turned out, so we'll have to.
Oh, and I also didn't, I didn't.
Will they be next Thursday maybe?
I didn't have election workers on my list.
Right, um, and I, so the Transfer Station Committee, I don't think Dave Gilmore.
Yeah.
Plans on being here, so you probably wanna remove him, so.
Okay.
If you, if you could use the one that I sent you with the track changes and, and, um.
Okay, I will, I will work on this. I didn't, so the Transfer Station Committee was one committee, I did reject it because I figured you would have some good insight.
Besides Dave, I think we're okay on that one.
Yeah, so it will be a three member, Susan, Eileen and Ken.
Um, and it, you know, given that Jim and Melissa are there, I, I mean, could we have some, one of the Transfer Station employees there, but I don't, it doesn't seem like it's necessary.
Go ahead. Okay, we will finalize this list for next week.
Is there anything that you're, other than the historical commission instead of the district study committee, is there any other committee that you're aware of that's not on the longer list?
Yes, so, well, not necessarily not on the longer list, but I did, I did add a few people to the Lake Garfield Working Group. Um, one thing that I did was, we had a few oddly timed appointments, like Trevor Hurst of Lake Garfield Working Group, Peter Merquette of the Renewable Energy Working Group. Uh, they, they're appointed to odd times in October and November, because we made one-year appointments in October and November. One thing that we can do if we, if we want to is try and appoint people to the end of the fiscal year, so we're not making odd appointments in the middle of the year.
Right.
Um, but I think one thing that we can do is just, you know, Peter Merquette may, term may go till November. I don't see any reason why we can't right now reappoint him through June thirty of twenty twenty-three.
Me neither, and was, was he not actually now elected to the group? No, that's the, nevermind, they weren't on, the Renewable Energy wasn't on that, right?
Wasn't on.
On the, you know, it's the bylaw committee.
Bylaw. No, all we did, so last year we created a few of these committees, Transfer Station Committee, Renewable Energy Working Group.
Right, right.
We appointed a Memorial Lake Raid Committee.
Right.
Um.
Which is fine, there's no, there's no, I mean, they, they're, they shouldn't last forever, so that's fine.
Um, and then also, at some point, we can discuss the Charter Committee if we're like in for discussion. So we currently have four members appointed through November of this year. That's a long discussion. Uh, no, they haven't. Um, we put appointments on hold back last fall, winter. Uh, Mickey Jervis is one of the people appointed to the committee, to the Charter Committee. And I think you remember some of that, but that is a, certainly something that we could address one way or another. Certainly there was a vote of town meeting, asking or advising the Select Board to form a Charter Committee. And then the process for appointment, the applications, um, just got halted, uh, midway through. For a number of reasons, we have six or seven, to my recollection, people who had said they would be interested in being on it in addition to the four people who are currently appointed through next year.
And the goal was to actually consider whether we should consider a charter.
Yeah, so it would be a study committee and hopefully they would make an advisory, it's kind of like Renewable Energy.
No, I understand.
Hopefully they can make an advisory opinion to the Select Board, rather than the Select Board taking on the idea of a charter.
Right.
Um, so that's just a loose end I'm gonna bring up.
Okay, also I wanna bring up that, um, I, it, it, I, I don't believe that my serving on the zoning board of appeals is in fact any type of conflict.
Yeah.
But because some people have raised it, I did reach out to a large number of people and was unable to find anyone, um, that was interested in serving.
Yeah.
So my concern is that, like, I, I'm willing to stay on it, we don't even have the two alternates for stuff.
I noticed that, yeah.
Um, so I, you know, I'm willing to continue to, to serve, it doesn't meet that often and I don't see that in any way in overlaps my duties here.
Yeah.
Um, but we should be thinking about that.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm not even sure I can't continue to run for it, I think that I can. Elected offices, you can serve in more than one place.
Yeah, it's my general understanding.
Yeah.
Uh, if you have any particular questions, of course, this deep ethics.
Right, and I, I can, but I'm just throwing out there that it would be a terrible idea for us to try to find more people that are willing to serve on CBA.
Yeah.
Um, I, I have made that effort and so far been unsuccessful.
Well, and in addition, Melissa listed at the bottom here, other vacant positions, ADA coordinator. We have some conservation commission, nurses that we're looking for, field driver. What does the field driver do?
Yeah, what is a field driver?
Just driving through fields.
I know.
And, and is there a fence viewer also?
Is a fence viewer also?
Yeah, fence viewer.
It used to be.
I could see fence viewer though, because.
See that fence is in my place.
I always thought you were supposed to put the ugly side of the fence facing you and the nice side facing your neighbors.
Yeah.
But I've seen people do the opposite.
And what tariff qualifies as that way?
Well, the side with the framing.
Ah.
Facing yourself and then the side with the pickets.
Right.
Facing your neighbors, because it's the polite thing to do in my, that's the way. If you have a slipper off.
My father-in-law had a big problem with that with his neighbor, I can't remember which way, I think the guy put, put, you know, so he had the good side, my father-in-law had the bad side, he was all disturbed with that.
So a fence viewer is the person you contact if you're unhappy with your neighbors?
I don't, I don't.
I would, I would think. A field driver, just, you know, and I probably can get rid of this, is, um, shall take up horses, mules, asses, meat cattle, sheep, goats or swine going at large in the public ways or uncommon and unimproved land within his town and not under the care of the keeper. So I'm.
In other words, there's loose stock in town that nobody knows who belongs to.
Which we have an animal control officer slash police department for that, let's see what it says for.
And it's not something that's on your slate.
There are two cows running around south fields right now, two.
Are you always there for them?
No, not ours, no, they know, they know.
They know, okay.
But, um, it happens.
So I think field driver is like, do we need to put it on the warrant if the next town meeting to remove it?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Fence viewer is when called upon to act under any section of this chapter may determine whether a partition fence is required.
Is required?
Is required. I would think that would fall under the building inspector, but.
I kind of would have thought so too.
We can look into it and we're, we're putting this off till next week, so we can re- respect.
Okay, okay, all right, I, I thought maybe the fence viewer went just figured out your, you know, if you will put up, put your fence up on the other guy's property, that's what you're doing, if you needed one.
So.
Um, did we ever get a clear answer, by the way, to the, um, issue of at-will versus timed length of term?
Versus time of term, did I send you what I said I was gonna send you?
Which was?
Which was the attorney-client privilege communications about removing a appointed official? I said I would send it to you last week.
I know, I'm trying to remember, I think I did send you some things, but now I still get what goes here.
We sent it to you, Justin, so we put it in our town council file?
You have it.
You do?
Um, it was actually, you actually received it. Uh, if you wanna look, so it's Riley, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Uh, subject cons, con, member confidential attorney-client privilege. And then you forwarded it to the Select Board, which now I have it.
Right.
And I just felt that it might answer, it, I mean, it literally says, but it talks about for cause, it's not a strictly defined term, but it's certain, you know, it, it's certain, so, um, she had, Susan had some questions last week or the week before and I told her that I would send her this for her consideration.
Sorry, I was not responding to you, but it's bad. Would, would that be under documents reference that they have CSP?
Probably, it should be called Riley removing.
Nope, not in that one.
All right, then I'll, I, I will, I will send it to you now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I try, I, I, well, I mentioned some documents at last meeting and said I would send them on and I think it was a lot and so, I mean, I've, I must.
Oh, I did find it, right, was any different documents mentioned to last meeting? Okay.
So I think if you consult that, it probably will clear up for cause and at-will appointments and the Select Boards.
I did read this and it was still, um, it provided some clarification, but, um, my was left with a question of, uh, do we want to continue, like, you had raised this issue. Do we actually want all these appointments to be yearly? Is that a system that is, do we feel that the system of yearly appointments is working?
Yeah.
And I, I don't have the answer, it really is a question.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, maybe it is and it, it may be fine to do yearly appointments, um.
Yeah. Certainly because you appoint someone for a length of time and as the email kind of goes into, um, doesn't mean that they are then kind of invincible.
Right.
For that year, um.
Well, absolutely, but even so, like, would, would, are there any on here that would should be longer?
Yeah, and some are specified by law. But I think the advisory committees to the Select Board, uh, one year is good because sometimes they've served their purpose, um.
What about election workers?
Election workers, I don't know, so and somehow election workers didn't end up on my list either.
Okay.
Um, but I will remedy the, the, the different, oh, and yeah, none of the police department part-time officers ended up on my list. I, I, I don't know how, I didn't try and remove.
But it, it kind of is a good idea because it keeps you, it kind of renews to, to doing something. Like once you hear, you gotta.
So it's not an idea to actually reconsider who it is, right?
Like, because there was somebody last year who was.
Yeah.
No longer with us.
Yep.
He wasn't doing his job, whatever one it was.
And I'm, I'm fine with that, like I said, I was asking us to think about it, I did not, I was not proposing that it was not okay.
The only reason I knew he was dead is because I go, whoops, didn't lie for ages, so. And I said, I haven't, oh, he died, oh, okay.
Okay, where are we at? We are, we are, so I, you have that, I mean, if you still have remaining questions, we can discuss sending them to council. But, and when you read the Select Board handbook, appointments and on, on removing someone, you generally, if you can avoid it, you don't wanna do it, um.
You don't wanna?
You don't wanna remove appointments if you can avoid it, um.
You mean a particular, in, in, particular individual or a category?
Uh, individual.
Okay.
Just because, and look in the Select, the Select Board handbook, but, I mean, it, it, it depends on what it is. But as you saw in the email from Riley, you need to go through a hearing process and if it's worth it, it's worth it, um.
It's always difficult to let someone know.
Yeah.
But it's good to know what's required if you're going to.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, um, I just.
That's fair, but I, I, yeah, I think it does answer that.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, if, as particular. Yeah, I don't think, I mean, if as particular, if as particular situation arise, that's when you go to town council. And and ask, as we did in this one instance, how do you go about this, and then ultimately it didn't get done. It, I don't know if you, it's a, it's a process and, uh. I I mean, it depends on the particular situation, um, but we can certainly consider, I mean, come back next week and if you say I don't wanna make any one-year appointments, or. Let's make the advisory committees indefinite appointments, or I'd certainly be, you know, willing to have to keep that.
But it and, but maybe as a point, like, um, advisory committees, the the point of the yearly, they will be to check in with them.
Yeah.
And maybe, and that's something we've been to before, maybe we should be actually meeting with them at least once a year.
I do, I think, for instance, Lake Arfield Working Group, um, you know, every year, a lot of money get gets, um, allocated by town meeting towards the lake. And it'd be really good to have some communications to the select board, explaining how the money's being spent, explaining the need, uh, for next year. And also advising us one way or another, because ultimately we will draft and sign the warrant. And if we wanna put that on warrant, it'd be good to have as much information as we can, and rather than us doing our own research, I mean, that's the whole point in adding Lake Arfield. Is that they can advise the select board on that particular matter, um, so that we're not spread too thin.
Also, I, um. Concerning the Carson, oh, wait.
We're we're, we'll be there soon.
Okay, no problem, yeah, I, it's just we're getting up to, so, yeah.
Town, yeah, town administrator, internal transfers.
Let's do like a deadline and write them off, um, so we have one thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents from select board other to legal counsel.
I think they moved on to, they moved on to internal transfer.
Who is that? It's Ellen, I don't think she realizes that she's. One thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-six cents from snow and ice to fuel. Two hundred and fifty dollars from select board other to Memorial Day. One hundred dollars from select board other to insurance for a bond. Approve all those, I have them all here to sign.
So I would.
Those were talked about by the finance committee when I did.
Correct, because both have to approve them.
We have to. Okay, I just, I I would recognize the number as well.
And then we all, yeah, they need approval from both the select board and the finance committee.
Right, they're gonna.
I would motion to approve the transfer, the internal transfers, and it's just read by Melissa.
Second.
Any further comment, any further public comment, discussion, none, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, and the internal transfers are approved, we'll sign them.
I have one item, but I wasn't able to get on it, just got it yesterday, um, the Board of Health has approved, um, to community EMS program grant that's gonna allow. Southern Berkshire voluntary animals to come here and do free, uh, blood pressure clinics, and the Board of Health has already approved that if you guys don't mind approving it and signing it tonight, they need the select board.
They need the select board.
Not to be, I mean, oh, no, don't come do it, forget it.
Yeah, so I would motion to approve the community health.
Community EMS program, um. Grant.
I would motion to approve the community EMS grant already approved by the Board of Health.
Second.
Any further discussion or public comment, there being none, call vote, Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, and that is approved. Review mail-in correspondence received or to be sent. Uh, also look at number ninety-eight, Susan.
Yep.
So the park commission, specifically Tracy Brennan, from the park commission. Uh, on behalf of the park commission requested to contact town council about the use of the beach. We discussed this at last meeting and we said that they should just put their questions in writing. And then Melissa, after the meeting, sent us something that Jeremiah Pollard had written, actually just a little bit over a year ago, on the same subject. And and, uh, that addressed.
Heard of it, however, I, um, ironically, I, as I was reading through things for tonight's finance committee meeting and reading through the. All C and advisory materials for finance committee members, I happened to come across, accidentally actually, something that mentioned specifically, the use of revolving funds. It is a legal thing you can have for parks, by the way. Right, specifically for parks, also, um, I have noted that a number, I mean, Stockbridge Bowl is in fact. Stockbridge Bowls are very common, but they charge for parking because of that. So. I would like better, I would like to address this question with new council, um, giving us a little bit clearer guidelines. For instance, if we didn't just say, no one that isn't a town resident can park here ever.
Yeah.
But said, in order to park here, you must have a parking permit, if you live in the town of Monterey, your permit, your permit costs X. Zero to twenty dollars, whatever you wanna make that number, if you are not a Monterey town resident, your parking permit costs Y.
Yeah.
We have not eliminated access. Right, we're just requiring people to pay, we could in fact even make a, obviously it would have to go through town meeting, a revolving fund for those monies and therefore specifically designate those funds for. Maintaining the beach, maintaining parking at the beach, pay, helping to pay for the money that gets used to take care of the lake, which. Right, is being used by the people there, all there. Um, I'm not saying we have to do those things, but I am saying, like, I don't, I I don't really believe that we have no options for having any control over what's happening with parking.
Yeah.
Um, and I would like to get an update on that, that's a little more, that clarifies what options to have and whether in fact we could, for example, charge for parking.
Yeah. Okay, so I will reach out, I obviously forwarded the May, uh, opinion that Melissa had shared with us with. Tracy, and then she said that there were questions that remained, so I will.
Of these, this email?
Yeah, thank you, Justin, for the order, verify, you know, these these questions. So I will, you know, if that's approved, I will just ask those questions of town council. And get some clarification, also ask about if not restricting charging.
First, another example would be Fairtown, in Fairtown Park. You can use your boat and their goat launch, but you must pay the parking. And there is no other parking area above that, you cannot access that lake without paying the fee for parking.
Yeah, I don't.
So just things to keep in mind, gentlemen, if you need to ask council about it, but if you did institute something like that, who's going to monitor stickers, who's going to sell the stickers?
Well, you know, my my personal opinion is that, so it's a lot of work for. I don't think it's worth it, but park commission is elected and. So they have their own jurisdiction over the parks, you put in the town beach, and so I'm happy to satisfy their request. I personally think it's not really feasible and worthwhile, but they're elected and so they do their own thing, separate from the select board, we just happen to.
I did.
Have the direct line to town.
When I was having a conversation with, um, Brian the other day on some topic, because I had recently talked to Tracy, I did actually ask him. If the park commission did enact this and we got town approval at town meeting to do this and went forward with it, um, would the police department be willing to. Be the one that issued the tickets, and they said they would. If we, you know, pass that, if we can moderate town law that you had to have that, they won't actually issue tickets. I just meant more, um, enforcing it down there, like watching it, because you can't expect the lifeguards to be. No, no, they would have to drive by periodically and issue tickets, just like you do if you have parking tickets, right, it's it's the same idea.
Yeah.
Heck, it's a source of revenue.
Yeah, I just, I mean, and my personal, look, it's the park, the park commission's jurisdiction and, uh.
I happen to be in there, so I asked them and they would be willing to do it, that would be fine. But I, you know, it's probably an issue, parking is is an issue, like, it can be very hard to find a parking spot. Um, and it's not unreasonable to, if you're a Monterey resident, to expect it, you should be, should be able to go to your own town beach without it being difficult, so I understand why they're. They they feel that it needs attention.
So would you limit the number of stickers, because I mean.
I don't want any part of this, but.
But there's these questions that you might want if you're talking to the parks, because if you sell them, if all eight hundred or six hundred, whatever residents you have, have it, you're still gonna have a parking problem.
That, well, that makes an assumption so, that all of the people that are parking there are actually Monterey town residents, which isn't inherently necessarily the case. It's awfully hard to know, right, because people can have license plates from anywhere, um, unless they clearly have a dump sticker from another town or something else that makes it clear they're a town resident elsewhere, you don't know. Um, so it's unclear. Where they're from.
Well, yeah.
I don't know, but I meant like how how would you limit the number of stickers that you sold, because if every resident in Monterey bought one, you still would have a parking problem down there.
Only if they're actually going.
I, here here, here's what I think is that the park commission, we're based, our role in this discussion is saying, okay, the park commission can ask these questions to council. And if they have follow-up questions, you know, we could authorize those questions and it's up to them, I wouldn't, you know, like I said, I wouldn't do it, but it's not, it's not our thing. Um, a couple other mail-in correspondence, small, just, uh, little updates, Melissa and and I were talking, uh, we have a date scheduled for the listening tour.
Yes, I'm working, I've got most of them scheduled.
Melissa is scheduling appointments, I think she only had select board chair, but I really think it should be each member of the select board individually. If you're okay with that, Susan?
Yeah.
So why don't we schedule at the time slot for Susan as well, please, um. Other than that, uh, I just wanna let you know that's going on, because we had to discuss that.
Is there a, like, the listening tour is just for them to get, for Dawn to get laid, go in?
Yeah, so she mentioned about twelve people, the police chief, town administrators, select board chairs, EBA chair. Concom chair, planning board co-chairs, uh, I I missed it, I missed some, Melissa could update you on all that.
Building, I, building structure, ZVA, planning board.
Cash collector, account tracker. And and some of them show me as a group, and Melissa's working on the scheduling of that, but, yeah, it's not, look.
It's just they think may be important in the coming year or half then?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think especially because we're a two-member board.
Yeah.
Uh, you should have the opportunity to chat with her, and they're doing this at no cost to the town, which is.
Excellent.
A good thing. And I, that's all I wanted to say, is that.
Okay, that's good.
Um, and then also, under mail-in correspondence, you had asked. Or we had agreed to ask about, um, the legal, question of legal strategy, she provided us a response. I asked her whether we shared an open meeting, she said, I recommend that you not share the last sentence with Susan outside of executive session, but the rest of it can be passed on in an open session if you like. I redacted the last sentence here, so that, you know, to the extent that it's a public document, it would honor her advice that, uh. That it, that it not happen in an open session to the extent that it would hinder future damage or litigating position, if you wanna enter executive session next Wednesday. To discuss this fully, then I'm gonna.
Kind of to to, for me to get one sentence.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna trust that you're aware of the content and that should it become important at future time, how have you made aware of it?
Yeah.
Because it seems unlikely that it's going to change anything we're trying to do, would I get to write for that something?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I I I don't think, I, like I said in the email, I would prefer not to have to enter your executive session.
This is my point too, for one sentence, that seems like.
Yeah.
It's silly.
So, I, but I do want, I do wanna give you that opportunity, it sounds like a little skip over. Okay, that's, for me, next on our agenda is approving minutes.
Okay.
I believe we're set to do July, or June one and June eight.
Yeah.
I'm already.
The other ones I'll have the next meeting.
Into the next year. Okay, so blue and orange had the same, are very similar, number three.
Uh, remind me, who's, uh, oh, there you go, orange is you, blue is me, okay.
Hi.
Any public?
I will see you next week.
Good for you.
I already told Michelle that.
Oh, yeah.
I'll see you one of these days, so.
Another double header. So I just think on June one, twenty twenty-two, since we both had that same heading.
What, on number three?
Um, attorney custody, that legal research and how it is built would depend on the type of question, but that attorneys are generally experts and do not need to research most questions. And you had similar wording, just let me know.
I don't really care, pick one.
Why don't we just go with the orange, it's right there, and we'll leave this, so if there's any questions. All right. I wonder if it is going to get confusing on that page four. Do you think that it would be worth, now that I have your edits and my edits? Do you think it would be worth coming back to this at a? I don't wanna, I I hate having five minutes on the agenda, I really do.
That'll be hiding each other's. Right, it's.
But one way to speed this up would be we could approve them next week, right?
Is there, which one is it, both of them or or just that one?
Seven sixteen. Uh, I, look, I wanna, I do like getting minutes approved, it's good to not have to, um.
Six eight, um.
Um.
I mean, I don't have a problem sitting here and looking at, looking at these, I mean, certainly the six eight minutes, there's not that many edits.
Yeah.
Um, I I feel like I could look through your edits on the six eight minutes, no problem.
Yeah.
Um, so far, you know, I'm only on page three of the previous ones, but.
You wanna do, you wanna keep reviewing, I'm.
Yeah, let's just get done.
All right, let's get it done.
It's our last thing.
Yeah.
We'll be, we'll still be on.
And it's not.
Right.
It's seven fifteen.
Right, yeah. We could still be on here by seven thirty-five.
We all started today.
Well, we did start. I am going to get a drink of water.
Good for you. Good for you.
On page four. Mm-hmm.
This is, you just words up here.
That, so that's what I looked at and said, maybe we should do this another day.
Okay.
But why don't we work through it and just figure it out?
Okay.
One, um. Alright, cause I already made the other s- small typo change on my, on my, on my version, so why don't we use my version?
Okay.
Uh, the motion to have a quarter of our media structured five hundred bill. Let's start the two sessions between.
Between June May and.
Just.
And Melissa. Pass it out of session.
If that reads well, then we'll just go finish it. Yeah, it's good to work through that.
Let's just get it done, like, you know, there's no reason that it's over us. We just have to die that other day, and who knows what'll happen next week.
Okay, and then it happens again the next period. Just notice we draft it in March and they have been working on it since the beginning of May. And would work on the goal list that Melissa's holding, the board accountable to these goals. So why don't we just go with yours and find that?
Okay.
And. Where did the goal list go that no one else was holding? The board. Accountable to these goals. You know, if that reads fine.
Sure. Why does it keep repeating names? Like, that's not like three.
Where is that?
Dennis, Dennis. Every time you put in a name, it doubled it.
I have no clue.
I don't make it, make it Melissa, Melissa, Dennis, Dennis. It's kinda funny.
Um, what do we call it? One column?
Um. I I guess I.
Who's blue and who's orange?
Uh, I'm blue and you're orange.
Oh, so you want the more formal, Mr.?
Well, I just don't want his name repeated.
Let's do that.
Okay. Do those ones.
Hey. You're blue? I have nothing.
I think yeah.
So I just had returned to once they had a chance to figure it out. So if we remember. Oh, I don't know if you were there yet, sir.
No, no, I just tabled here, okay. Uh, so. You removed, I've made a table, then you just removed table entirely.
Yeah, I just said would be returned to.
Okay.
Which I haven't heard, where, I don't think.
Returned to?
So remember Dennis had that, uh, grant proposal?
Right, no, we have it actually.
Yeah, he did tell me he was coming back in, uh, who was he working with? Peter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are we just.
Peter is coming in on the sixth.
At noon?
Twelve, yep.
Okay. Just as the chair. Of the renewable energy.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll I'll check in with Dennis and see if he's coming back in too.
Yeah, well, I guess the question for Dennis would be, we had put off that grant proposal. If, we're, it's not gonna happen, we don't really need to pick it up again, but.
Right.
So I would just remove table there, so just would be returned to.
Okay, that's not. Yep.
For approximately three hundred dollars choose.
That's what she had said at the time.
I didn't remember that.
I guess the chip is a thousand dollars, but then she said it's only, in that other amount, it's apparently only ten dollars?
Fifteen.
I didn't get that.
I think, I think the, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't.
I don't agree with you, but like, I I wish it was a little clearer, because.
All I know is that no one, all I know is that no one uses it, but we have to have, or all I, my understanding is that no one uses what we have to have.
That's my understanding too, but either way, I'd like to know when it's been promised.
Yeah.
And there's a big, don't be fifteen bucks.
Well, I think, I think it's like a thousand program and for all the ballots, but a replacement chip is fifteen and something.
So the chip is actually fifteen, but then you gotta pay to program it or something, yeah, or whatever.
Okay. Is the name of the company on it, Mark? Cause I can look at what previous bills cost.
Probably.
Probably. Hey, did you get a chance to look at the thing for the table?
Here, I just said I'm indifferent, I am.
Yeah, I I think the bigger one's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
If the goal is to be able to fit everybody around, well, it's how you define the discipline.
But I sure the five members like.
Well, how about the five, there are five people on the ZDA, we were sitting at this.
Well, who was, there's larger, uh, planning board seven. You don't really need to.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, no, it's not that. I just said I'm indifferent.
Right. Ta-da.
So. This was a deletion, but the attorneys aren't yet, I went, oh, I guess I went with the orange. Yeah, that was a change that discussed, this could be a both re-read.
Right.
And I just went with the orange and.
Okay. As long, as long as it ends up clear, I don't, I'm really, I I'm not particularly thinking about who works, getting accused of something wrong, I already.
Yeah. 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 Um, motion to approve June one, twenty twenty-two as edited.
Uh, second.
Susan.
Yes.
Justin, yes, and the minutes are approved and we'll initial that top, which is what Melissa knows, that's the copy. There, I can go in our pile of stuff that we don't, we don't weigh with. Did you already get that?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did.
Okay. June eight, twenty twenty-two. Okay.
It should probably read either those present for the executive session or, um, is present for the executive, executive session included board members, blah blah, it's it's awkward.
Yeah, sure. Um, I think it's good to list it.
How about just saying those present instead of present?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Alright.
I have no problem with your, I'm.
Do you want me to, uh?
Yeah, you wanna do your copy?
Right.
And then I'll just initial. Um. Yeah, it's, the more clear we can be with the executive session stuff.
Oh, I have no problem listing the people, I just wanted to.
Well, and I know I even said, you know, this would include, but just, you know, these three people there.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we're already on morning on executive session minutes, so.
Yep.
What do you impress?
Well, this is, this isn't the executive session, though.
No, we don't, we haven't had on the executive session yet, which I've been thinking. We have that guidance, so that we don't necessarily need to enter executive session. To do executive session minutes. Now, I do think that it's good that the board, in many instances, do executive session minutes as a board. But remember that email, that advice that you got from the open meeting law division?
She can give the permission to approve them.
For the one.
Right.
In particular, how, has that been, uh?
I did write them, I didn't send them to you, I just, I was gonna go over those and.
No, not, not, yeah, it wasn't these ones, that was the la, the last, was last board, which have been approved but not released. Um, right, the, what was that? May. Uh, no, very end of June, uh, what's the month you found it? Well, I had approved those but not released them.
Mm-hmm.
I am sorry. My point being, for the June eighth executive session minutes, we should have a discussion about how we wanna approve them.
Okay.
And. I think it was probably the type of meeting where we could authorize one board member, the other to a- approve them. Rather than enter executive session to approve them. I just need to.
That saves us from having to do another set of minutes for the second minute set. Minutes. Which is kind of, and I, it was a very short meeting, but had a very specific purpose.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm fine with, if you wanna do the minutes, you're welcome.
Okay.
I I trust you.
I could still send them to you to give your edits, but he would just have final approval of that.
That works too.
Eh, yeah, can we do that? Or was it? Let me take a look, let me take a look at the, uh, the opinion. Right? Because you had that, I probably have lost it, but I probably can find it.
I have it, I I, I'll fill it up tomorrow.
Um, and we'll just figure out how to do the June eight minutes in the least invasive way possible.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and if we need to enter a second session approved, we'll do that, we'll do that, so, anyway.
We'll do it, but if I can look at them and give you my edits, then.
Yeah. And I'm not sure that we can. I'll ju, we'll just.
But if not, I, and I'm willing to trust you, I, but like, I feel like it was very specific.
Yeah.
And you're pretty accurate and I, I don't see a problem.
I'm more intrigued.
I know, I'm glad to hear you say that, cause I had to keep reminding myself. Well, um. When will the next town per hour actually be out? Because she was out on family leave and we haven't, I haven't heard anything from her and she's on vacation this week.
Is that so?
Last I heard, well, she asked for permission and I believe we granted it for the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, which will be tomorrow or Friday.
Didn't, didn't you fault, didn't you email her after last meeting?
Yes, but.
But, and we had said, um.
We had said, we gave her approval to choose hours Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of next week, but I haven't heard that.
Okay.
Um. Last I heard, her daughter was pumped from the hospital.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, yeah, I'm doing that.
Okay.
I just was wondering if anybody else.
No, I didn't, I, I, I don't.
Right.
I, I, the last thing I knew was that you were reaching out with what we had written on.
Right, and I did. That night.
We both capitalized.
Where did we go with the other one?
Uh, new business one, right here, so one of ours can be, we're going with your copy. Oh, what do you, what?
Okay.
But you paid before. For that one right there, I'm sorry.
Oh. Um. So.
And just the title five inspection, keep that break.
Right, so I was just gonna ask about that. I looked at the thing you sent, um, so I'm just trying to make sure I, you, you didn't get a chance to read it yet.
Yeah, I was.
Uh, I saw it happen.
My. Right, okay, and did you talk to?
I didn't really. I just saw the email was longer than it looks good and.
Oh, yeah, there's some repairs that need to be made and.
There's some repairs that need to be made and he seemed okay with having the playground on top of it as long as it didn't, nothing went down more than two feet below grade. Does anything currently go down two feet below grade? Like, I don't know how common it is for equipment to be anchored that deeply.
Which. Well, Frost, if you wanna bury something in real, and and Frost prove it, and you do forty inches in our area, I think. Um, but.
So I think typically.
It might not be the type of structure that they're.
That they need to do that?
I know they had to take apart a piece of the equipment that's out there to get to.
Oh, really?
One of the pipes that they used.
Yeah, I mean theoretically, your septic's not supposed to come up, right? It's supposed to reach down and out. It, I'm not a septic person, but just.
But I know they're worried about.
Other people, there's play areas and stuff. Now, I think our, our concern, my concern was if we build a nice new playground on top of a septic that needs to be dug up in five years.
So according to Jim and and their, while they were all out there, he said that, um, this septic will last longer than a next, another new playground equipment.
Have, have you seen the plastic playground equipment? It's Jim Willis, but not Mc, not McFarland.
No, Jim, Jim Hunt said that.
Oh.
I haven't talked to Jim Willis yet. I want, he's on vacation, he'll be back next week, um, I want to get his opinion on it.
Cause Scott McFarland did the title five inspection. Who does, he was the health agent in New River. I think.
And they had it pumped, there was, it was a few minor repairs that he made. Jim, Jim Hunt didn't seem to think about that.
They're, they seem pretty minor raising, raising the.
But it did, it, I.
I didn't, their connector so that it, the pump out is above grade.
He said it all depends, you know, on what kind of equipment, so I think the next step for the Parks Commission would be to send out a, a more, um, detailed survey than that one, cause that one really doesn't. I don't think, ask the appropriate questions about what kind of playground equipment are you looking for, you know, like, um, for what age groups and this and that, and Jim and I were talking, depending on how many you have, because the septic field was this way, we might be able to re-situate it so it's not all sitting on top of it like it is right now.
And I guess also, like, um, one of the other things that I think is worth doing this process is, that we've talked about with ARPA, is. What's the usage like? Cuz I have no idea what usage is like, right? Like, I, I'm not using that equipment now, cuz my kid's twenty-two, so, and I literally don't know, or we've got like two kids easy in every two weeks, or we've got, for all I know, every time there's a ball game, there's thirty kids throwing all over that thing, I have no idea. Um, and, and, you know.
Video cam.
Right, and Michelle did, Michelle did, um, okay, it, it hit a little quicker when we walked in. Um, Michelle Miller did point out that, like, you know, if you're serving a kid, you're actually serving their family, so it wouldn't, just counting the number of kids we have in town would really give us a clear purview, I don't know would it, would be counted.
And there's grandchildren that come up, or people who aren't necessarily residents, and there's, I mean, at the end of the day, I think it's like a lot of things, the data is good, absolutely. It is like when you were talking about.
Well, you have to make.
At the end of the day, you have to make a judgment call to some degree.
Sure, and it, but it's just, would be helpful to know, like, people have different, like, people with kids that don't use the community center, want playground, people who don't have kids or who do things in the community center but don't play in the playground, they want that, but it would be good to know something about how many people are being served by these things, if they, especially if they're, we're gonna talk about fairly equivalent costs, potentially. Um, we have to make a call about which portion of the community is gonna be most served by those dollars. I mean, and we gotta base it on something.
Yeah.
You know, like, if I had like the red slide better, like, I mean, you know, we have to base it on something, that's all, so I just, it would be good to have some sense of it, but a better survey might be. You have thoughts of what the questions should be, you should tell us.
Yeah.
I think too, part of the survey was finding time to meet with them in person, right? So maybe that would be more, uh. Maybe the parks should meet with, uh, playground representatives.
Okay.
Write that last question on the surveys. What day and time are, what days are you available after five P M?
Okay.
Yeah, no, I mean. All good things, I was happy to see that it got done, I haven't really looked at it much.
But I'm glad it passed, like, those are fairly.
Yeah, I know, I was concerned.
I know, right, that was my concern.
I mean, supposedly it's thirty years old, but.
One other thing, on mail-in correspondence. That was, um. There's people on Sancho Road that haven't had electricity ever. And they just reached out to me, and I'm just going to.
It's just one household?
Yeah.
Okay. Maraz and Johnson?
Yeah. And, uh. Jesus, one more. And I just wanted to, and I'm going to forward that email to you.
Okay.
Because you are working with, uh, the national grid.
That is a, is a reason. Verizon. Right. So for, um, I haven't had a, a miss it back, I did contact Adam to see if what the Verizon woman told me was correct about the whole deal, and he said. He wasn't aware of that, and he's surprised that, um. That you said that, but he was gonna go check, but he hasn't, you know, moved back, he said that you need to go up there and look, so I don't. And I'm pretty sure if I drove out and looked at the polls, I would not be able to tell if it's done or not.
I don't know what the Maraz Johnson email says, but you might just wanna check in with me first for the history on that before making any.
Yeah, I mean, no, they're not, it was just a update, no requests for action, but I figured, uh, Susan, well, I'll just pass along, cuz they sent it to me just cuz I. I've been in touch with them a couple times, uh, in the past year, and, uh. Susan should have it as well, and just be updating, even give the update and context, and Jim Hunt also has been pretty involved, you'll see through the email chain.
Basically, we're at that we have to wait for the national grid to submit a new poll petition. Request.
Okay. I'm okay with the change we made on there.
Okay.
Eighth, you're the answer?
On the eighth, no, did I, uh, did I initial your, are we initial boom, boom? Uh, I will motion to approve the June eighth, twenty twenty two minutes, like, word as edited.
Second.
Susan?
Yes.
Justin, yes, minutes are approved, we'll initial them to serve.
Oh my God, like catching up.
Do we initial that, the top? I don't know, we always do that.
I like that, cuz it's nice. I save them.
All right, thank you, all right. Public comment. Comment, it's a question from the public. I would move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
How about yes?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.